Welcome, everyone, to the May 8th City Council Work Session. Welcome, everyone, here and at home. And today, we're going to be talking about the comprehensive plan for bringing properties into the city. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome back from your break. And we have a full schedule today, so I'll turn it over to Renee and her team to start with the presentation, and of course, we're hoping for a lot of conversation.
They fixed the mics, apparently.
Apparently so.
Well, yours. Okay.
All right, let me start with some introductions. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I blew you out, right? Councilor Taylor likes it when I speak a little clearer, anyway, so I'm good to go.
No, she's good.
Yeah. I'd like to start with some introductions. As you know, there's been a lot of community work done in the last couple of years by some very dedicated neighbors and community members. And with us today is Carleen Riley, who's with the River Road Community Organization, and Kate Purley, with Santa Clara Community Organization.
Welcome.
And they're going to participate in our presentation, give you background on some of the work that they've been doing. We also have Steve Niestram, from our Planning Department, and Teri Hardy. So, and I'm Renee Grooby, Director of the Library of Recreation and Cultural Services. So, thank you. As you know, council requested that we have this work session to begin discussing how we can invite unincorporated residents that live within the city's urban growth boundary into the city. And so, this is the first piece of beginning that conversation. There are pieces outside of the River Road-Santa Clara area that are unincorporated, but for today's purposes, we're going to focus on River Road-Santa Clara, because that is the biggest area where you have unincorporated properties inside the city's UGB. And if you can see on the map that's in your packet, no, actually, yeah, the map, you can see that, and there's a couple of others within your information that really articulates or shows kind of the area that we're looking at. But as you can see, the River Road-Santa Clara area is really from Chambers and Northwest Expressway north to the, I guess it's Beacon, so, and the river to Northwest Expressway. So, that's the period or area that we're looking at. So, today, we're really going to start out by giving you a brief introduction of the River Road-Santa Clara neighborhood, just to familiarize yourself. We're going to review our planning efforts, past, present, and future plans, and then we're going to give a high-level overview of our existing annexation policies. So, to start with, some of the neighborhood demographics. There's approximately 32,000 people that live in the River Road-Santa Clara neighborhood areas. The River Road is around 12,000, and all of those are inside the city's UGB. Of those, about 30% are city residents, and the rest are unincorporated. So, fairly high percentage of River Road residents are not part of the city. In Santa Clara, there's approximately 20,000 residents, and of the properties in that area, about a little over 50% are unincorporated. So, a little bit different demographic between River Road and Santa Clara, and then you'll see that as we move forward. There's five special districts within these two areas: River Road Parks and Rec District, River Road Water District, Santa Clara Fire District, Santa Clara Water District, and Lane Rural Fire District. So, as you'll see, we have a planning timeline. Some efforts have been going on for a long time to really determine what's important to the neighborhood and the community, and also to give us some guidance as to how we move forward into the future, starting in 1987 with the River Road-Santa Clara Urban Facilities Plan. And then, the latest efforts being the Neighborhood Analysis, which are in your packet for both River Road and Santa Clara. And, as you know, Envision Eugene, which has a number of recommendations around livability, and the work that you're going to hear about from Carleen and Kate around the Santa Clara-River Road outreach and learning efforts, which is really an amazing effort that they've put into gathering feedback from the community that builds on the transition plan that occurred in the mid-2000s. So, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Carleen, so she can give you an update on where they are with SCROLL.
... so I wouldn't miss any of my points, so please forgive me for reading. First, the River Road and Santa Clara team wants to thank City Manager John Reese for encouraging us to hold neighborhood conversations, to learn about the thinking around our governance issues. Next, we want to express our appreciation of the City Council for approving us for a Strategic Neighborhood Assessment and Planning Program grant, and allowing the city staff and technical support for us to undertake our outreach program. Our own city councilors, Mike Clark, Andrea Ortiz, and Claire Sarette, have personally engaged in many conversations with us. Neighborhood Services, and Reenie Kane, in particular, were insightful in guiding us to activities and resources that helped us work with efficiency and diligence. We are greatly indebted to the senior management staff for their generous help in addressing the needs of our neighbors, both incorporated and unincorporated, on transportation issues, police services, park concerts, cleanup of the riverfront, land use planning, and financial reports. We hired Julie Fisher of Cogito Partners as our consultant, and she saw us through to the end. We will continue to share our knowledge with you in the hopes of protecting and enhancing the livability of our neighborhood. The checkerboard maps of River Road and Santa Clara, as you have in your packet, illustrate the unincorporated and incorporated properties, and depict the root of our neighborhood's concerns, whether owners want to be annexed or not. The Santa Clara-River Road Outreach and Learning Project, otherwise known as SCROLL, was undertaken during 2011 to gather the views of our neighbors and businesses, particularly in the area of land use, governance, parks and recreation, and transportation. We spent a lot of time answering questions about why county residents have to go to the city of Eugene to build on their property. Likewise, city residents wondered why the whole area isn't in the city, and why they don't get the same rates at the River Road Park as their county neighbors do. Questions were asked about who they should talk to about a stop sign that has been knocked down by a car, how to get a speed limit on a street reduced, and to whom they report graffiti, and to which entity do they report when their car is vandalized. We made a total of 736 documented contacts with neighbors, including special outreach to our Latino neighbors, to business owners and employees, fire and park district boards. We heard their stories, shared our experience, and tried to update information, such as the incorrect perception that the tax differential between incorporated and unincorporated property would amount to thousands of dollars per year. We learned that our neighbors valued most, what our neighbors valued most in our neighborhoods. Santa Clarans rated highest the protection of agricultural land in and surrounding their neighborhood. Protecting and enhancing waterways, wildlife habitat, and open space came in second. Third was to make streets safer and more friendly for cyclists and walkers, followed closely by the desire to maintain and expand recreation services. There is a chart there, and you can see the numbers on these items. River Roaders selected safer and more friendly streets for cyclists and walkers for first place. Their second choice was to protect the look and feel of the neighborhood while accommodating additional growth. Their third priority was to increase police patrols, which was voluntarily checked from a list of additional items outside of our four focus areas. We have a good sense of the contacted neighbors' concerns and questions, but we are aware of the significant numbers of people we did not contact when over 30,000 people live in our neighborhoods. Due to the complexity of issues and diversity of residents and their specific situations, a transitional voluntary annexation option might be welcomed by at least some residents. For that to be truly effective, it is critical that work on our area planning begin as soon as possible, and that it be done in parallel with attention to police services, transportation needs, and the Santa Clara Community Center and Park. This is our opportunity to get it right and strengthen the trust that has been developing between the city and our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Hello. At the end of our SCROLL process, we, Santa Clara and River Road, formed a group called SCRIPT, and that acronym stands for the Santa Clara-River Road Implementation and Planning Team, and we're currently undergoing that work. It was formed as an outgrowth of our SCROLL process, and the goal of SCRIPT is to be a joint advisory team to our two neighborhood organizations focused on implementing the goals described at the end of the SCROLL process. We see our roles as threefold. We are supposed to be representing our community organizations in planning with governmental agencies, evaluating circumstances that impact our neighborhoods, and developing initiatives and suggesting actions to Santa Clara Community Organization and the River Road Community Organization. In short, what we do is we take in what's offered or happening in our neighborhoods, we look at it, we think about what we might do to respond to it, and suggest ideas back to our neighborhood associations. Most recently, we've agreed to create two subgroups that focus on land use and transportation, as these are two of the most compelling areas demanding our attention, and that may serve to get us a long way down the road to an updated area plan. This may sound fairly straightforward, but it hasn't proven to be so. Not only do we have a patchwork of incorporated and unincorporated residents, as Renee mentioned, we have five service districts providing essential services in our joint area. These are long-established community institutions whom we rely on and who in turn rely on us. As you read the SCROLL report, you'll get a finer-grain picture of each of the needs of these different service districts and the services that they provide us, but most importantly, they're all part of our future together. To give you a snapshot of our challenges in Santa Clara, if you'll have a look up at the screen, you'll notice that all the yellow area is unincorporated, and the purple is incorporated, but the entire area is our neighborhood association. So, more than one-third of our landmass is outside the UGB. Most of that land, and our land inside the UGB, are Class 1 and 2 soils, the most productive in the country. This land's highest and best use is for providing food security long into the future. We hope the rest of the metropolis sees the wisdom in keeping this land agricultural, too. This truth means that, from here forward, we will always have to grapple with the interface of the UGB and the Metro Plan, Lane County, and the city of Eugene in much of our land use issues. The whole of Santa Clara is served by two school districts, three fire service providers, and one water district. As is often said, we like to quote, "Oh, what a tangled web we weave." Santa Clara didn't develop as a suburb of Eugene. It was its own agricultural town from about 1850, and as such, it was a community that was meeting its own needs. As Eugene continued to grow faster than Santa Clara, we began to have a population of residents that used Santa Clara as a suburb of Eugene. Eventually, Eugene grew up to and within our boundaries, and that gets us to where we are today. I see us, the city of Eugene and our neighborhoods, as two grown individuals with a long history of dating. There have been some rough patches and a few infidelities, but we're still working things out. We're considering formalizing our relationship, but we aren't ready to just jump in and hope that, hope for the best, and let love sort it all out. So, we don't want to move in with the mother-in-law and live under her rules, but we both bring significant assets to the union, and we need some sort of prenuptial agreement that assures us of not losing ourselves in the union. Our neighborhood associations have been working really diligently to try and take the pulse of our residents. We know that for many, there's still a lingering distrust of motives of the city. Our work, yours and ours together, continues to go a long way to healing old hurts and dispelling myths, but we don't yet have a fully informed populace. We know that an enforceable area plan can go a long way to creating a better sense of hope and trust among the residents. This would translate into greater buy-in amongst the unincorporated residents. We're willing to do as much of the work as we can to get there, but we clearly see the need for not putting voluntary annexation, the voluntary annexation cart before a neighborhood planning horse. Our vast array of neighborhood studies and planning documents all contain a few threads that haven't changed, even as our landscape and our political makeup has. The neighbors continue to want neighborhood-based community plans, protection of our neighborhood character, preservation of our agricultural lands, waterways, and open spaces, engagement in proactive and collaborative problem-solving, creative options and alternative strategies to sustain our long-established community institutions, and most importantly, the creation of an environment for achieving the highest level of public trust. Thanks.
I guess I'm next. Thank you. Those are both really nice statements. As we move into then talking about area planning, I just want to remind you, and I think this echoes what Carleen and Kate have been saying, we'll start with the work that's already been done. The significant outreach envisioning work that's been done by SCROLL is really impressive and gets us a good portion of the way down the road to starting an area planning process. So, what's on the screen is those priorities, as I've categorized them, and I'd just like to point out for you that the top four, I think, are pretty clearly area planning bullets. They fall into those two committees that Kate mentioned, land use and transportation, and would result in implementation through code or policies within the area plan. The last two, however, increasing police patrols and expanding services and events, may need to have different programmatic or service provision tools to make those happen. Go ahead, Sarah. Next. Thank you. So, as you all know, we began working on the Envision Eugene process in 2010 with a wide variety of community members, including many participants from Santa Clara and River Road, and that resulted in the seven pillars that provide the framework for the plan. All seven of these relate to future development and the future in general of the River Road and Santa Clara neighborhoods. The community vision map shows where we, as a whole, envision future jobs, homes, schools, and parks occurring in our community. You can see the Santa Clara and River Road wedge of the urban area, and it's a significant portion of our community. The land area is almost 14% of the entire UGB. River Road is also a key transit corridor, as we've called it in the Envision Eugene recommendation, and that's an area where we're looking to have both high-frequency transit service and concentrating additional growth, jobs, and housing along that corridor. We're also, oh, sorry, go back. We're also planning to expand the urban growth boundary in one small location in this area, which is to bring the Santa Clara Community Park into the UGB, and so that work is progressing. The rest of the farmland, as talked about by Kate, is really not being discussed for expansion, and is a very high priority for avoiding for urban development, as talked about through the community visioning process. Also, in the yellowish parts of the neighborhood, those are all low-density residential, and there is a significant amount of vacant land in River Road and in Santa Clara, and that is assumed to develop, and how that happens is really going to be addressed through the area plan and the resulting policies and codes that come through that process. Next. So, to begin, we have Kate's documents to work on. There is a livability pillar strategy contained in Envision Eugene that directs us to do area planning with these neighborhoods, and to begin that as soon as we can, following adoption of our urban growth boundary. So, that's what we're planning on doing, building on this significant body of work. And as I mentioned, it won't be an area planning process from scratch. We won't have to do a lot of community outreach envisioning. We'll hit the ground running and start where the work has left off. So, to summarize, I've got one more slide. The area planning process, as we see it moving forward, does need to have a step where we agree on the roles, outcomes, and timeline for producing the work, so that's an important thing. Then, we'll need to design a public engagement process that recognizes where we are in this journey. Again, don't need to start from scratch, but we need to work together to figure out what the appropriate level of events and surveys and things is the route to move us along this path. In terms of building on the SCROLL work, again, these neighborhood look and feel kinds of things can be addressed through land use code and policies. The safe-walking and bicycling routes need to be talked about between the city planning and transportation teams and the neighborhoods and service providers, and the preservation of agricultural land, waterways, and open space is a development code-related issue. So, I see those all falling pretty nicely within the umbrella of an area plan and its implementation tools. At the same time, and this has been talked about, it's critical that we integrate area planning work that results in code with service provision work, transportation projects, the park project, and talks about annexation. So, if that's a tool that's to be used, we need to make sure we're integrating and going along on paths that will eventually cross and make sense to implement together. So, in terms of the annexation tools, Steve is going to begin talking about what we're doing now and what we could potentially do in the future.
Thanks. So, annexations are certainly a major part of the discussion today, not the whole part of the conversation, but one we wanted to give you at least some briefing on. And I'd like to first start with just a quick visual history. As Kate mentioned, there's a rich history in the area of development that goes back many, many decades, but the annexation history for this area is actually much more recent, beginning really in the '70s, when we saw the first annexations occurring in the city. And as you look at the map, that gold area represents some of the early annexations. And this area really came before we had a Metro Plan, before we had urban growth boundaries, so it's kind of a significant landmark to show the limited amount of annexations that were occurring prior to the creation of our Metro Plan. Following the adoption of the Metro Plan and moving into the '80s and through the mid-'90s, you see a much more accelerated pace of annexations that occurred. So, this is taking us from basically '83 through the mid-'90s. And then, if we continue on into the next decade, move from mid-'90s to the mid-2000s, you see again a pretty brisk pace of annexations that occurred. The last category I was going to show really represents from 2008 till the present, and the reason we picked that date is that's somewhat of another milestone for the city in that we assumed a responsibility for annexations because of some recent bills that were passed, and so that became a different process with different statutes that now are in place. And as you can see in that purplish-pinkish-red, whatever color that is, there are very few that you can find up there on the map, and even though it's a smaller timeframe we're talking about, it is illustrative to show that the pace of annexations has severely been reduced, and there are probably a whole host of reasons why. Obviously, the economic downturn is certainly one reason for that, but another one that I would throw out is just that many of the larger parcels, the larger undeveloped pieces of land, really came into the city during that previous 20-year span of time, and we don't have quite the same amount of land, as you all know, in this area that, at least in terms of sizable parcels for development that we once did. So, that helps explain part of it. But another reason is the changes in state law that occurred in 2008 have had an impact on annexations, and I'm going to touch on that in just a second. So, as we move into, I want to give just a real high-level overview of our annexation policies, and we could spend a lot of time talking about this, but I want to at least give you a few of the key nuggets that I think are important for the discussion today. First of all, state laws, of course, where we find kind of our authority for annexation, and there are a host of statutes that exist about what types of annexations are possible, how they can happen, when they can happen, and so, in essence, a toolbox of annexation mechanisms that exist for cities to choose from. So, it is at our discretion to take those annexation tools that we seem to find appropriate and to basically use those to determine how each city's going to annex in its own way. So, we do have that discretion, and policies that guide that are found in our Metro Plan, and so this affects not only Eugene but Springfield as well, and there are a whole host of policies that exist in the Metro Plan that have essentially been there from the very beginning of the Metro Plan that help guide how annexation is to occur in this region. One of the fundamental principles that's found in the Metro Plan is that, over time, it is expected that all areas within the urban growth boundary will be part of the city, and that's a principle that really is held even at the state level. It's kind of a cornerstone of the Oregon land use system that our urban growth boundaries are intended for that. So, that's one statement that's been there for many, many years. As I mentioned, the state provides a variety of tools for how annexation happens. In Eugene, our Metro Plan provides fairly specific policies about how that's to occur, and really what it says is that we expect to grow at a more incremental level with annexations and really focus annexations around property owners' requests. In other words, it's up to property owners to come forward and make those requests for annexations, as opposed to more aggressive techniques that could involve things like city-initiated annexations. Those are allowed by the state under certain circumstances. We choose, as a community, not to promote that as a viable tool. So, given that, we're reliant really on property owners to come to us for those annexations, and the primary impetus for property owners to make those requests is around development requests for their property. Our land use code requires that, as properties further urbanize, they need to annex become part of the city to do so, and so, it's usually development interests with property owners that are the primary trigger for us to see those requests being made for annexation. And to give you a couple of examples of what that could be is a property owner who has a vacant piece of land that's zoned for residential, wants to build a single-family home on that property. They would need to annex first and be part of the city before they would be able to build that home. On a larger scale, someone has a large section of land, they want to subdivide into residential lots, again, annexation would be required for that kind of a request before the subdivision could come forward. So, moving to the next slide, what that means is we've got certain advantages with that, but there's certainly some challenges that come with this policy framework as well that I want to touch on briefly. As I mentioned, first of all, we're really dependent on development activity then as kind of our primary driver for annexations, and as you know, right now, that's at a fairly low pace, so that's just a reality that we deal with right now. But it also means that we're focused on our vacant land and our underdeveloped land as kind of the ones we really look to as future annexation opportunities, and what we really don't address as much is all the developed properties that exist in the neighborhood. And as, again, as Kate mentioned, we've got, you know, neighborhoods that were created many, many decades ago, long before we had urban growth boundaries and long before they were part of the city, that have been there for many years, and the challenge of how to bring a lot of the developed properties along has been a challenge for many years. So, what that looks like really on the ground is not only an incremental level of development, but a little bit more of a patchwork approach to where those annexations occur, and you've heard the term, you know, checkerboard pattern or patchwork pattern for the neighborhood of city versus non-city properties, and it's very true. And that's a challenge that we live with every day, and what it really poses some significant concerns with is our ability to deliver city services, urban services, in an efficient manner, and you're all well aware of that. So, that continues on as we march along with these policies. A newer challenge that I do want to touch on is, as I mentioned earlier, relates to changes in state law that happened in 2007. A bill was passed that essentially abolished the planning, or the Boundary Commission, who was the decision-maker for annexations in the region, and handed that responsibility over to the local cities. In doing so, state law also changed in terms of how annexations can happen, and one of the key changes there was a requirement that all annexations must be contiguous to the city limits. That wasn't the case in the past, and so, for many years, we could approve annexations without having to worry about contiguity. Now, that's a central Now that's a central issue that we face, and it has posed some real challenges for many property owners in River Road, Santa Clara, who want to annex but can't. And so that's a new challenge kind of added to our list that we need to pay close attention to. So given those challenges, moving to the next slide, we've really tried to look at new ways of, and maybe new tools, that might make annexation more attractive to the community. And we have one recent pilot project example that I just want to touch on briefly, and that involved a property owner, Robert Getty, who we worked with last year and the year before even, to try to make things work for his benefit as well as ours. He was a very typical situation, property owner who owned vacant land, who wanted to build a single-family home, but was required to annex but couldn't because he was non-contiguous to the city limits. So we partnered with Mr. Getty to work out a system that could achieve his goals in the cities as well. While he pursued special legislation to address that concern of the non-contiguous nature of his property, we worked with him closely on looking at some tax benefits that could work to his favor and still benefit the city in the long term. And we arrived at basically a package of agreements that we brought forward to the council last year as part of the annexation request, and you all approved that, I believe, unanimously. And I point that out only as an example of the kinds of techniques that we may want to try to explore more as we move forward. So something to keep in mind as we talk today. With that, I'll pass it on to Renata conclude.
Okay, so that's pretty much it for our presentation. Our next steps, unless we hear otherwise from you today, is to develop a plan of action that includes a comprehensive community engagement process and also a higher level of financial analysis. So that's where we are today and open for comments.
Thank you all very much. That was very thorough and really set up for a good conversation. And I think one, if you've done a huge amount of work on it, and it looks to me like we've got a huge amount of work to come as well, but very worthwhile. And I just want to say personally that I really appreciate the effort for us to try to think together about what would work well for everyone and to try our best to get to that place. So thanks, thank you very, very much, and thank you, staff, too. Mike, I think you're up first.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo the mayor's sentiment. Having the opportunity to represent a part of Santa Clara for the last six years, I've been involved in this process for quite a while and seen some of the challenge issues brought up by some of the staff members and certainly by Carly and by Kate. One of the issues that Steve raised is what prompted me to ask for the work session, that if you look at the history of when people annexed and how and why, we've kind of slowed to a crawl, and the only time people annex now in that area is because they have to. And I'd like to see us develop as a comprehensive plan, many, a basket of reasons why they would want to instead of have to. And we have a long history with the communities out there of, to a certain extent, you know, the city forcing their hand, I would call it, I suppose. And it hasn't worked. I think working together is the wiser front. We've done so in a number of ways over the last several years, and a lot of folks that are already in the area is, you know, many of us have heard, wonder why they aren't annexed at this time or wonder why we're not doing more. So I want to see us do that. I sent out earlier a list of five items that I think are good guiding principles for the sake of the staff's comprehensive plan that they're going to develop. That comes from long conversations and long hours of work with the area residents. First and foremost, the first number-one rule is no resident should ever be forced to annex, period. It has to entirely be voluntary. The second one would be that we should have a basket of incentives, that a property owner who would want to annex, who is living in their property, may have different feelings about, say, increased police patrol that they'd get becoming a city resident than a non-custodial or an owner that doesn't live there and rents it out to somebody else. They may need a different sort of incentive as to why they'd want to annex their property. Certainly, we'd want to look at, although I didn't put it in the list that I sent out, we'd want to look at time limits and timelines for this to reach the greatest possible success. We also want to make sure that we have a fairly robust communications plan so that the city's intentions would never be misconstrued in any way and that it would be perfectly clear. And the process for annexing would be extremely clear to every resident who had an interest in doing it. Certainly, we want to make sure that if we have the ability to discount or to simplify the process, and I'm running out of time, so I'll take a second round.
I'll just, I'll let you finish your list.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I would say that we want to simplify the process, and Steve raised another question, which there are some legislative fixes that are necessary. I worked with Senator Edwards when we had the Getty issue come up, and he sponsored the bill that allowed that to happen in the legislature, but it was for a time-limited amount of time. And so I think if we can look to more broadly extend that, something that's already been done and already been tried and had it work well, perhaps we can. And then lastly, some of the services currently provided by others, by districts and service providers in the area, like the River Road Park District, are critical and at the very heart of living in the area for many of the residents. So I believe we have to work very, very closely and cooperatively with those service providers to make sure that the benefits to the residents remain very high. Thank you.
George Brown?
Thank you.
Are you up to the queue, Alan? Thank you.
Thank you. I've got some questions. And on page four of the AIS, it says in 2007, the council passed a motion that halted the practice of adding right-of-way to annexation requests where such additions would create islands, and I don't understand what that means.
I think I can answer that. So there are policies in the metro plan that talk about actually encouraging right-of-way as one tool for annexing through the area, but that caused a lot of grief in the neighborhood over many years, and that issue was brought back to the council in 2007 as part of a work session you had then. And out of that came a resolution by the council that clarified kind of the conditions under which street annexations could occur. So the purpose of doing street annexations is we have a patchwork of ownership of streets as well in County and the city. And so over time, just like private property, the intent is the streets would also become part of the city over the long haul. So that's something that the metro plan calls for. The concern was that there was concern in the neighborhood that that was being used as a tool to basically encircle areas that were not part of the city. And under those circumstances, there are provisions in state law that make annexations, albeit city-initiated annexations, easier. And so there was concern that this was establishing a precedent that could threaten some of the neighborhood. And so the council said, "Street annexations are still appropriate as a tool as long as they do not create those island circumstances."
You mean like, kind of in the middle, say, of like city streets and then a gap county and then create another city street as an island in between?
It would be no more than...
I don't understand the island concept, I guess.
The idea would be that an area of unincorporated land is encircled by city property, whether that's private property and/or streets.
And they're forced.
And if you create that circle, basically, you have an area that's in essence surrounded by the city. There are provisions in state law that make it easier to annex areas like that. And so there was concern.
And the concern was maybe they don't want to be annexed and they were forced to.
Right.
That was the concern. Okay, that was the island. Okay, thank you.
Can I add one thing to that, George? The concern of the residents was that a private resident would go and asked, voluntarily asked to be annexed, and on their application, then the city would tag on the street annexation. And the resident never asked for the street annexation, and it became a process of incremental annexation that other residents who weren't interested in voluntarily annexing felt was a tool to encircle them and then to be able to use that state provision for island annexation. So that was the rub in the neighborhood about it.
Okay, thank you. Well, I've got some questions regarding, I spent a lot of time studying the taxes and service for River Road, Santa Clara, and I've got some questions there. And I'm just wondering, the first thing that struck me was Santa Clara residents are paying three times more than River Road residents for the urban renewal district, the downtown district and the riverfront renewal. I'm just wondering why it would be a different tax rate. I mean, these are residents of the city, and why a different neighborhood would have a different rate for that? If anyone can answer that.
Go ahead, Carly.
Well, one of the reasons is because in the River Road area, we have a very large levy for River Road Parks and Recreation. Approximately one-third of my taxes goes just to River Road Parks and Recreation, so it makes quite a differential. We already subcontract through our River Road Water District to get fire services too, so it's a different kind of delivery of fire service. So those are some of the kinds of things that occur there.
I see. Okay, well, that was another question. I understand that one of the districts does Lane Rural Fire, but I don't see them listed on either side of this. So is that, is each household built separately as part of the taxes?
So Lane Rural primarily is outside the urban growth boundary. So that's the, I think that is why you're not seeing that as part of the, you know, this analysis for...
I see. But I thought they were in your list of...
Yeah, there's a small, there's a small piece.
It's very small.
So Lane Rural's area that affects the UGB is primarily in the northwest corner of Santa Clara, in that industrial area. They, Lane Rural serves a large geographical base. Only 1% of the landmass that they serve is inside the UGB, but that 1% provides 53% of their income. So for them to be incrementally annexed out of the UGB service that they provide would make it completely untenable for them to provide service at all. And they provide service west all the way to Triangle Lake. And so we understand as the Neighborhood Association that they serve areas that are outside the UGB but are still in our Neighborhood Association, and it's important to us to figure out a way not to just ax Lane Rural. We need to make it possible for them to provide emergency services all the way west where we can't otherwise. The city won't provide them.
Yeah, I can see that's a very huge potential problem there. Okay. And then along with this urban renewal thing, I'm just wondering if, let's say, a whole bunch of properties get annexed, would that allow the bonded debt to be paid off faster? And also, they would be paying City of Eugene bonds too. Would we pay those bonds off faster if a whole bunch of people were annexed and they started paying immediately?
We'll have to get back to y'all, have Sue respond to that question.
It might be a nice thing to pay the bonds off faster. Okay. Let's see. How, I just, how would the River Road Park and Recreation, those payments, how would they be reconciled if, let's just say magically overnight, everybody annexed into Eugene? And would they go to, they'd be paying City of Eugene permanent taxes instead of those, and would those be reconciled in with parks and open space somehow?
Well, that's, you know, that would be a part of the base tax, and that's something that, you know, would be a decision as to how we actually decide to allocate the taxes that come to the city through annexation. We're currently working with River Road Parks and Rec District on establishing a 195 agreement, which we've not had for a while, to work through, you know, how do we do a transition? How do we help provide those services or ensure the services are provided long into the future? So...
All right, thank you. I have several other questions, so I'll need another round.
Okay. Chris, you're next.
Thank you. I really appreciate the work that's been done, and I really appreciate Mike's wanting to bring this forward because even before I got on the council, I was always very interested in the notion of taking such an enormous piece of property where, in some cases, you're literally minutes away from downtown and you're not even in the City of Eugene, and figure out a way to actually fix that. But fix it in a way that is appropriate and actually works. And I agree, and I think this is the general feeling of the council is voluntary is the way to go. I think the notion of forcing anyone to join the City of Eugene is a bad idea. Who wants to bring angry people into your voter base? That doesn't make sense. So I think the idea of involuntarily annexing people is not a good one. So then the question becomes, and this is going back to Kate's metaphor, which I think is a great one, by the way, we have been doing a little bit of dating, and we're thinking about whether or not we should get engaged. And to me, engagement is where you make a connection, but you also commit. And so the question is, what commitment am I prepared to make to you and what commitment are you prepared to make to me? Because that's what our engagement really would be. At the same time, when you mention a prenup, it's almost like the underlying principle here is we're working toward our best outcome, which is what we really should be doing. We should approach this as the best outcome. But we have to have a system or a structure in place just in case a worst outcome occurs. I don't want that worst outcome to happen, but in case it does, we need to know what that looks like. And I don't want the prenup to imply that our engagement is not committed, because I think that is fundamental. This gets at your five points. If we're going to go down this road, we have to be engaged. And am I too loud?
I heard you echo me.
It's my big-boy voice. Is that we really have to approach this as a commitment and that we have to demonstrate that our commitment is sincere, and I think the volunteer element is a huge piece of that. I was on the council when those rules passed, and at the time, I recognized how much it was going to constrain and hamstring our efforts at annexation. But that legislation didn't come from nowhere. It did come from people who were very, very interested in doing this in a thoughtful way or at least in some cases, to restrict it. And so how you get back again to a system that works more quickly and more efficiently is something we've got to be very careful about how we approach. So I'm coming at this from the standpoint that it's not a matter of if. I absolutely think this needs to happen. It needs to happen voluntarily. For me, in order to do this thoughtfully, it's like a relationship. If you force the relationship, they take off, they run away. If you push me too hard, I don't want to, you know, I start getting nervous about this relationship. The relationship has to grow and evolve at the pace that is most comfortable for the people, and that's, I think, what we're looking for. What is the comfortable rate here?
Alan, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to deal with the difference of having the webcast be about 35 to 40 seconds slower than the conversation on the phone, which is odd. But I had a question about the presentation, the financial aspects of annexation in this area. In particular, maybe someone from staff can discuss how the finances work using the Getty annexation as an example. My understanding is that that particular way of doing things, which was acceptable to Mr. Getty, acceptable to the city, was actually revenue-neutral for a long time, something like 10 years or something like that. So could you describe that? And then also answer the question of, what are the implications for city services under that revenue-neutral example? Do all the city services still get paid for? How does that work with regard to city services? And then the third question would be, what would need to happen to the model about annexation for it to be a net revenue positive for the city to have an annexation? Yes, no questions.
They're trying to figure out...
We're trying to decide who's going to answer it. Alan, this is John. I'll give a good start to it. Some of that we may have to get back to you because it may involve a little bit more detail. The guiding principle, one of the guiding principles from a financial perspective with Mr. Getty was to make it cost-neutral for him to come into the city. And essentially, what that said was for 10 years or until a change of ownership in land, that he would pay no more than the equivalent of what he's currently paying in total taxes. There's a little formula that goes with that and a few nuances, but that was a general principle involved. And so... And so, and there's, if there's more detail, we can sure do that. But that was, that's what we're trying to get at, to say that knowing that one of the biggest concerns, at least what we've heard over the last several years, is the cost differential. And I appreciate Carleen mentioning that a good part of their outreach was also trying to articulate and that the perception of a really large differential is probably more perception than reality. It's much smaller than people would anticipate. But we were trying to minimize that for a period of time, after which whoever owns the property at that time, still could be the Gettys or somebody else, they would now, at that time, pay the actual city property tax rate, and so that would provide that transition period. Does that help?
And I can maybe tag on to that.
The difference.
The other questions around, what are the revenue, what do the revenues look like? How do we decide what the service provision looks like? That would be part of our information that we come back to council with, once we hear kind of what your concerns are, the direction that you would like us to go. Because depending on what the annexation, the number of annexations, the financial options for residents, it could, there could be a lot of scenarios that affect what those financial pieces look like.
So if I got it right, just specific to the Getty example where there was an annexation, it was revenue neutral for 10 years, meaning no cost differential to Mr. Getty for that entire period. But the city was taking in a new resident as if they were in the city already, but they weren't getting the same revenue per household in the Getty space than they would if the house were built already in the UGB, right?
That's already within the city limits, so that's correct. And so for the onesie, twosies, in the greater scheme of things, it, the whole transaction essentially is revenue neutral. But if, in a large scale, that's what Renee is talking about, that we still need to do the much more detailed analysis of what's the impact of the revenues and then what services still would need to be provided back into that community. Because obviously, if people come into the city, they would have a rightful expectation of services as well. And that's the bigger financial analysis that we still need to accomplish.
Right. So if we did a large scale and brought in thousands of people, they would be getting the same services as everybody else at a discounted rate potentially, and therefore it wouldn't be a revenue enhancer for the city. It would be a loss.
Well, we just don't know. I mean, we just don't know what those specific numbers are. Under the, and the way we did with the Getty, it's true that the total amount of taxes paid by new residents that just been annexed in would be different than the current, but that then over time would, they would equalize themselves over time. And so during that period, we don't, we just haven't done all the analysis to know what that, if that's a positive, neutral, negative, or what the magnitude of that is. So I don't even know what the specific direction it would tend towards.
Yeah, but by and face, they're not paying the same rate as everybody else. Therefore, we're not getting, and if each, each new person's marginal cost to the city was the same, then bringing on a bunch of people at a lower cost isn't a good deal for the city. It's not a risk generator for any means.
It's true that the marginal cost per each one would be less. That's true. And we would just need to figure out what that means for the total service package and the timing of services coming in into that. And I think from our perspective, the finances, we all need to understand that, but the value of the annexation just isn't just an economic proposition. There's several other pieces around governance and efficiency and actually the services that can be provided out to the community. So that's really of primary importance for us on that side.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
I would, I've got Claire, Betty, George Poling, and Greg in the queue for the first round, and then others. My only comment would be, we pay, number one, we pay a high cost for the patchwork situation that we're in, in many ways, both financially and in terms of relationships. And two, that we don't know how we would work a transition, and we don't know what the actual cost of that would work out to be. So that's unknown, but I think clearly, at least from my perspective, and I think I'm hearing it, we think it's in our interest to figure out this together so that we can move forward together. And we could figure this other out to try to make it work the best for all of us. Claire, you're next.
Yeah, thank you. Well, this is great. I'm really glad we're having this work session. This is one of those situations where I stepped into this role, and gosh, you're in the city and your neighbor next door is not. Okay. And, you know, I was aware of that before, but to have it be my, a big part of my ward, you know, I'm getting up to speed, and I've really appreciated the work, the really hard work of the folks in the River Road and Santa Clara area and the leaders in Scroll, and the investment of time and energy and smart thinking and caring that you've all made. And I also really want to thank the city manager for, from my understanding, pretty soon after you arrived in this role, reaching out to folks in Santa Clara River Road and really getting this process re-energized and providing the resources and the staff support to do that in a smart way. So I really want to appreciate you for that. And I want to appreciate Councilor Clark and my predecessor, Andrea Ortiz, for the efforts that they've made to facilitate this process and to bring this to us today at this work session. I don't have a lot of technical questions right now. I'm really just appreciating what I'm hearing. I like a lot of what Councilor Clark is saying in terms of some principles to think about as we do this work. I agree with what the mayor just had to say about the benefits beyond just financial cost benefit analysis in terms of governance. We have a whole slew of people out there who really don't have any effective representation within the city, and they're kind of in this limbo in terms of that. So I think there's lots of other reasons to pursue this. One small technical thing I did want to speak to is that question about the island. It does seem to me that at some point, it's going to be really difficult to avoid that situation. If we do, over time, start bringing more and more people into annexation, there will end up possibly being some islands. So as we're thinking this through, we'll want to kind of figure out how we would address that situation. But overall, I'm really pleased with how we're approaching this. I think we're taking into account the folks who are already out there and thinking forward of the vision of what we want to see in the future. So thank you.
Betty, you're next.
Thank you. I think there are values to being a part of the city. I once in another, since city, another state asked to be annexed because I wanted to be part, have some power, and even the power of a vote is something. And people would get free library cards, they would pay more taxes eventually, but I think the, I think the Getty deal was a good model for us. I said that at the time, that it's, it's a good way to say, at least you have time if your taxes are going to go up, and you have some time. As far as the cost to the city, if we took in, when we get new areas in the city, it does cost us more, but we're already sending police out to that area, and they don't know where they're going. I, I know that people, and the police don't know, nobody knows who's in the city. People who live there sometimes don't know, am I in the city or the county? So do they call the sheriff, or do they call the police if they need help? And maybe they both go out. So it's costing in that way already. As for the islands, I'm really glad that we made it so that we're not deliberately trying to create islands. I think that was like tricking people. I know, I've had experience with that in another place too. I think that, that we're on the right path if we let people know that it's voluntary, and I don't know whether it should be 10 years, the same tax or not, but if it is, that seems like long enough to adjust to it, plan for it, and if it changes, and properties frequently do change hands, and in that case, we would start getting the full amount of taxes. And I would think that it would be a profit to us to even get, we're not getting any tax from them now. And because we are, in a sense, the roads, the police, so much is already, we're already doing. I, I see the biggest problem as the park district, and I don't know what, if anyone has a solution to that. When they have better recreation facilities than we do, than a lot of us do, I could see why they wouldn't want to give them up. And that's, I think that's a problem we need to solve together. Thank you.
Just a point where we defend our recreation facility.
Step right up. George Poling.
Well, I would, I would just like to thank the staff and all the volunteers that have worked on this, this, to get us to the point that we are. I'd especially like to thank Mike for bringing the work session in, his five points of light on the issue. I think, I think actually those are very good starting points for the discussion, and I think we should look at that very carefully. This is an issue that's been in the making for many years. I used to work with a gentleman that's lived in the same house in the Santa Clara area since the late 70s, and he's been a staunch opponent to annexation. And I heard from him not too long ago saying, you know, I think it's time. He said with the, the decreasing benefits that he's seeing as a county resident, that now maybe it's time that he become a city resident, and to him, it's worth the extra tax money to, to do that. So, and I'm sure there's more than just this one, one person out there that's starting to look at it that way. So I think perhaps now is a good time to have this conversation. In reference to Getty issue, I think, I kind of hope we look at that as, also as a starting point. You know, it was an issue that came up, it was dealt with on, you know, on a state level, but let's don't hold ourselves to those end results. I mean, maybe we can work out some sort of a different type of equation or whatever you want to call it. But again, that is another, another good starting point. And I'm specifically speaking about the taxes on that. And as far as taxes, any new tax revenue is a plus. And like, like Betty said, you know, we're already spending city time and city funds out in the unincorporated areas. So by allowing people to voluntarily annex into the city, you know, we are getting some added income in, from the tax revenue. Again, we have to, you know, be mindful of the other taxing districts that are losing as a result of this. But we do need to make it easier for those that, that are wanting to annex in the city to go ahead and, and start that process. So, you know, I worked out in the River Road, Santa Clara area for probably the majority of the 25 years I was with the sheriff's office, and I know what it's like trying to figure out who's who out there. But, you know, with the computer systems they have now, it makes it a little easier, but in the heat of the moment, it's hard to tell. And it's, it'd be a lot easier if there was some different way, you know, paint the street signs a different color or a different color mailbox or something. But it, it can get confusing out there, and when it comes to public safety issues, you know, time is, is a key element. And somebody calling in, you know, to report an emergency, we don't need to be spending the time trying to figure out whose jurisdiction. They don't care what color the police car is or what color the fire truck is, as long as they get help. So, you know, that's, I just have one last point. And I'm also very mindful, and I appreciate the fact that we are willing to work to protect the farmlands just to the north of the Santa Clara area. You know, the food, security and food issue is a hot topic now, and I'm supportive of that.
Greg, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. As a matter of full disclosure, I was a resident of River Road for five and a half years in the late 90s, and I think I have an intimate knowledge of what my neighbors, including my in-laws, think about annexation. But besides that fact, I, I kind of want to dovetail on what Betty's comments are. Kind of ask the question, where are the tipping points in terms of when and if there are certain transitions of jurisdictional authority from, say, for instance, the River Road, you know, Parks District either morphs into the city or goes away, or other entities that make up this patchwork of services that, you know, will eventually come into the city? What are those specific tipping points? Is that driven by, by population? Is that driven by other factors? Or is it a kind of a soup or gumbo, if you will, of, of factors that can trigger, you know, the, you know, end of, you know, certain institutions or the morphing of other institutions into ours?
I'll try that one. It's a really good question, and something we've been grappling with. Part of it is financial sustainability for the district. So when revenues, you know, as, as annexation occurs, less revenue to a district that allows them to continue to viably operate. So that's one tipping point. What we're working with, and I'll use the Park District as an example, we're trying to figure out what that looks like. Are there other ways to provide the services once that tipping point is hit? I.e., can we contract back with the district or some form of the district, you know, with the revenues the city receives back to them to provide the services? So there's some different ways that we can approach it as we move forward, and those are the things that we're talking about with the Park District. Santa Clara Fire District, it may be slightly different because we provide services, we have a fire company right, you know, next door, and so a lot of the service overlap is happening now, and there may or may not be as much of a financial implication to the city to do that. So...
Just piggyback on that. I think, as, I think Renee alluded to it, it doesn't have to be an either or, in some cases for sure, it can be an and, kind of a discussion. And that's, with the River Road Parks District, we know, we've heard that that's a valuable entity for many people out in River Road. And so we want to both respect that and figure out how we can all work together towards a best outcome. So I appreciate Chris talking about the best outcomes, and so that's part of that conversation. The Santa Clara Fire District is a good example where we don't want to, we don't want redundant services. And so how can we be most efficient with some of those kinds of services? And we'll be taking care of, taking a look at that as well. But I think when we talk trigger points, that will be sort of the next layer or two of analysis that really kind of drills down on some of that.
And, and one other question, this is going, shifting a little bit to the transportation Based on my experience, I know that we have significant transportation challenges that are emerging and have been emerging for a number of years out there. Have we, based on, you know, the, you know, planning processes and the transplans and everything that we've gone through, are we, if by bringing in, you know, large swaths of River Road and Santa Clara, what are the transportation planning implications around that for the city as well as for LTD, as well as for, you know, ODOT in certain areas and our whole transportation plan and design?
Know some of that?
Go ahead, Carleen.
Greg, you'll have to come to our Monday evening River Road meeting. We are having a transportation forum. We have Savannah Crawford coming from ODOT to talk about Beltline. We have Kurt Yider coming from the city to talk about the city's transplan, and Tom Swetz from LTD is coming to talk about the next leg of MX coming up River Road. So we're working on that transportation piece right now, trying to get it all integrated. We don't want people overlapping and doing redundant bridges or whatever, but we do want to serve the needs of the people with bike paths and good cycling paths.
Very serendipitous.
Greg, are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're going into round two. We have, probably this will do it, we have four in the queue. We have George Brown, we have Mike, we have Betty, and we have Chris. George Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple more questions. On page six, there's a little column on the left that says agricultural land use. On page six, there's a little column on the left that says agricultural land use, and it says, there's 4,242 total acres in Santa Clara. Of that, 679 acres is agricultural land use and 318 acres is agricultural, agricultural zoned land. And I'm just wondering what the difference between those two categories is.
So agricultural land use would be land that's currently in that use on the ground, and the zoning is applied to properties that are inside the UGB but not yet annexed? So there's an ag zone that's for those properties inside the UGB but outside the city limits, usually with a UL overlay attached to it, which means urbanizable land.
So the agricultural land use is outside the UGB?
It could be inside also. It just refers to the actual use that the land is being put to.
I see, so even though it's zoned ag, it may not be actually being farmed, is that?
Right, right.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then on page 12, population and property use, there's, you know, annexed properties, the total properties. So I just did a little subtraction and came up with 7,000 total properties in both neighborhoods that are unannexed. And do we know, that's just property, so I assume that means industrial and things. Do we know how many, how many homes there are that are unannexed in both neighborhoods?
I believe that information's in the neighborhood assessment.
22,000.
Oh, it's in this, it's in this report somewhere. Okay.
River Road has 32 percent, at least that's what we're charged through Neighborhood Services for our mailing, so 32 percent of our mailing list household is annexed.
I think the number's 22,000 that are county properties, excuse me, in the River Road, Santa Clara area, I think.
Right, but not necessarily inside the UGB.
Residents, excuse me, not, not properties, residents.
Okay.
We'd be happy to follow up in more detail.
Well, I was just curious, there again, I was, you know, I was referencing back to this page here, the taxes and services, and trying to figure out, well, let's just say magically, let's say there's maybe 3,000 in each. And then 3,000, if we had 3,000 new people in Eugene in the River Road area, and they were all paying approximately $9,000, $1,000 a year to the city, you know, then you go, well, okay, that's great, but then services are going to have to be provided there too. So, and Santa Clara especially wants parks and community ball fields and community center and all that. So that's the, the question is what, I mean, I think that they all should eventually be annexed, really. I'm not trying to oppose that idea, but I'm just wondering.
Thank you, George.
Oh.
Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, George, those are great questions, and that's why I was hopeful we could have the discussion we've had today, and it's gone really well from my perspective, so that this, we could essentially as a group say, yes, we want the staff to go away and come back with a comprehensive plan for how to go through this process in the best, most effective way, and for everyone's best outcome. And I want to say thank you to the city manager and the staff because in the six years I've served, I've seen a real change in the city administration's view of the area, how folks out there deserve to be treated, and how we want to build a relationship in the future. And that's due to their leadership in part, and I really appreciate that. And the reason I bring that up too is because, great, you have the support, go and do good and avoid evil, and come back with a plan. My questions are around timing now. How long, first of all, do you anticipate before you could come back to council with a comprehensive plan?
I think we'd want to take it in a couple of chunks. So the reason why I say that is, is I think the next piece we'd come back with is that next level to ensure that we're still headed in the direction council wants us to go, and then we would take it in the next chunk. And so what we'll do is we'll have to spend a little bit of time on staff and then come back to you more specifically on when we think we can hit those chunks. But that would be our intent, is to come back with it.
My question is, when do you anticipate the next work session where you come to us and say, here's what the next chunk looks like, here's our plan?
Can we get back to more specifically?
Not to put you on the spot, Mr. Mayor.
Because partly, I think we're just going to want to talk a little bit about what we've heard and then be able to put that into a plan.
And that's understandable. I appreciate it greatly, at least from my perspective, if you'd communicate with us your expectation of when you're coming back to us for the next work session.
That'd be great.
Here's one of the reasons why, at least for me, this is really important. Kate, and to a certain extent, Carleen brought up another issue that I know is a huge deal for folks out there, and that's the area plan, and the timing of it with what we're doing. So I think Carleen's made a wonderful point when she said the parallel efforts there, and it kind of gets to what Chris was talking about, of building trust together. I think that the issue around, you know, once we get Envision Eugene done and we're looking at the refinement work that needs to be done in that area, we should be at the same, the folks out there deserve to have more stake in the game, more authority, more ability to vote for their city councilors, all of the things that would make them a part of the city. At the same time, they have some stake in the game. They have an ability to have say with authority about how that area plan develops. So the timing here, to me, is important, that we're working in parallel to make sure that that sort of work is completed while we're in the process of throwing open the doors and saying, hey, come to the party, come join us.
Well, we'll be looking at parallel as well.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Betty.
Thank you. I just want to repeat that the farmlands, agricultural lands are important to all of us, not just to the people who live out there. That's really top importance almost. And I asked for another round though because I wanted to clarify what I said about recreation. I didn't mean, I didn't mean they're doing a better job necessarily. What I meant was they have more money, and because it's a park district. And I know that they value it highly and they're afraid of losing it. I don't have personal knowledge of it, but I know that they have services because it is a special district, and they have the ability to do more because of more money, which is, helps everybody, of something that helps everybody. And I wanted to thank staff for bringing in Carleen and Kate. I think that's really good that they were here at the table. Thank you.
Okay, Chris.
When you mentioned bringing this back in a couple of chunks, something that would be helpful in that first chunk would be very informative for me, is, one, what is your perspective, or what do you believe are the perspective of the contentious issues in the area, and what is the current status of those contentious issues as you, as you would assess them, so that we can get a sense of where that landscape is? The second one is, gets back to the notion of cost versus expense. You mentioned doing a calculation of what would the revenue potential be for bringing those in. Well, I know that there's a cost to provide services, and we're kind of dancing around it, but because we don't know for sure. I really want to at least get your estimation of what you, what you think those might be. Because there's ongoing infrastructure costs, there's one-time infrastructure costs, there's regular maintenance costs, and then there's all the services and everything else. And that then leads to the timelines. What would be your realistic, and this could be maybe a number of different timelines. If we do it this way, it might take this amount of time. If we do it that way, it might take that amount of time. I remember it was a number of years back, I went to a park and recreation conference where one of the gurus in park and recreation had done calculations on what it costs to provide services to different kinds of property versus what they pay. And at the time, he did it, for every dollar that commercial industrial property pays in taxes, it only costs, you know, like less than 50 cents to provide service to them. And that government and park property is a little bit more than that for every dollar they spend. So it's a, it's a good deal, it pays off. Single-family residential though, now this, this includes all taxes, including schools, counties, everything else, for every dollar they pay in taxes, it costs $1.19 to provide the total of services. So that's why, to me, it's very important that we get the calculation of, in today's figures, because this could be wrong, I mean, that was years ago, things may have changed. I know it costs to provide services, particularly to residential property. What does it cost to do that? That's the calculation that I'm looking for. That, to me, would be very important as a part of chunk number one, because I can't really have a productive conversation until I get a sense of what those cost expenses are. And then the timelines and what are the contentious issues? That would be extremely helpful for me to have those.
Kate.
I just wanted to make a brief comment that addressed both Betty and Greg's thinking around the River Road Park District. And in some respect, Betty's right. The River Road Park District already exists there. We have a really high-functioning facility, and it's doing a great job, and it's really serving the neighborhood. Perhaps the most cost-effective way for the city to keep providing those services, if lots of people annexed, was to, you know, use that facility, use those people, use this as it already exists, and bolster that, create a more robust activity for that that could spread north to the Santa Clara area as well, instead of getting in the business of creating yet another community center that might not, you know, actually do a better job than what's already there. So that's one thing. There is a little bit of a new development in Santa Clara about a building that might be available for us to take over, management and care of, on a church building, a historic property. And we're in the process of negotiating with the congregation about the possibility of that and having our own little community center, which we've been looking for, for a long time, an actual physical place for a nexus, for people to meet and provide the kind of community relating that goes on at a community center, which we've missed for a long time. So there are possibilities where if we really are working on collaboration and alternative, out-of-the-box thinking, to use the resources we already have and create a fiscally responsible, yet robust, community service out in that area. The other thing I wanted to briefly address was when Mike was talking about the co-comitant timing of an area plan and voluntary annexation, part of what Script is doing, when they have recently decided to break into land use and transportation subgroups, is to do as much of the legwork as we can for the area plan on a community level. So instead of waiting for Envision Eugene to be done, and then Terry to be available, and then to start an area plan, we're trying to work behind the scenes with Terry, get a little bit of direction from her, but really do as much of that groundwork, whether it's mapping or outreach or, you know, community organizing around protecting the waterways and all the different goals that we've assigned for ourselves, important things for ourselves for our area plan, to do as much of that as we can before we even get started with the city in working that out, so.
Thank you, Kate. So one other, we're going to wrap this up now, but one other thing I wanted to highlight for staff and maybe for you guys too, is that we know that there's continuously been a high interest from the legislative end of this too, there's always something cooking. So I think it's really important that we proactively let them know what we're trying to do together, so that they don't think they have to fix something that we're already trying to work on ourselves. So I think something from the neighborhoods and the city together about what we are, the ambition we have to do this and where we're headed, could save us some energy in the long haul, and we should just try to keep them, keep them up on it, so we don't have something unexpected occur. Yes.
Trust me, they're well informed.
I just wanted to add that I have been talking with Senator Chris Edwards about this, and he did say he would be having a special town hall for the River Road, Santa Clara area on annexation.
Greg, real quickly.
Yeah, one quick question. Where's, where's Lake County on this? Are they willing to walk the bride down the aisle? Or are they going to demand a dowry of 50 goats? You know, I'm serious. I mean, I haven't really kind of, you know, gotten a sense of where the county is necessarily in this conversation.
Okay. You want to say anything? Perhaps not.
You know, through the years, I've talked with various commissioners and chief administrative officers, I haven't gotten any really significant pushback. And so it's just, I think it's part of it, they're part of the ongoing conversation.
Yeah, here, take her.
So I see that Mike and George want one more sentence, but I'm looking at the time, and I'm just asking you, please, please, wrap it up. And then Mike can.
I just wanted to address some of the things that were just said there, in that I know at least two commissioners who I've had conversations with, who actually would like to see us make this happen sooner rather than later, because the idea of more of those residents being in the city actually saves the county a considerable amount of money. And they're very excited about that idea. But then secondly, I actually wanted to say thank you to Senator Edwards and to Representative Hoyle and Nathanson, who we've been working with really closely actually out there and are well aware on the issues that are presented by this, and they've been a big help, especially with the Getty bill this last time.
I would just say though, I don't think everyone's exactly on the same page, and I think if we get intentions in writing, I think we'll all know what we are actually saying. George.
Well, I, yeah, this is germane to what we're just, we're talking about. Looking this thing over here, I see that whether you're inside the city limits or outside the city limits, the county has actually held blameless on this. The difference is like a buck or $2 on a $143,000 home. So as far as them, they're not going to be losing, that was one of my concerns, I was really happy to see this sheet here. So they're not going to lose money. They may still have to provide services, but they're not going to go in the hole on it any more than they already are for the services that they provide. And I think that for the next round, I'd like to see a little more analysis of the Getty deal, because my understanding, that was just kind of a one-off thing, had to be done before January 1st. And I, I would hate to see a lot of these properties coming in and not, not paying their fair share like, like the residents of the rest of the town. I mean, that might be an incentive, but it seems like it might not be a good deal for the general fund if we're having to provide services, but they're paying less than the rate of everybody else. So maybe a little more analysis of the Getty thing. I'm going to look my stuff up in my office, but I'd like to see a little more analysis of that going forward. Thank you.
Notes from you all.
Thank you very much, it'd be very helpful.
Thank you very much. So before we go, as all of you know, we're going to lose a very important staff member soon, by the end of the month, Margaret Harter's going to be retiring. And so I wanted to take a moment to introduce you over here. I think she's still patiently waiting her way through. This is Dawn Brownham, and she is going to be your new assistant and helper, and mine, and so we want to welcome her, and I'll help you each go over and say hi and get to know her and let her get to know you. Okay?
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, I was supposed to say, just for your information, that she comes to us as a new city employee, but worked for Oregon Research Institute for 16 years, so, just so you know. All right, thanks, everybody.